With the council, we'll take the Chapter 12 Climate Elements. Planning Commission recommended draft of that to the Committee of the Whole on November 5th. For discussion with them, they have been discussing and making some proposed changes as they go through that. Their review processes, which will send back to you guys when you have your final public hearing in late November. Or make your final recommendation. Next meeting will be October 23rd, which will be Chapter 8 Resource Lands. Public hearing on that and then we've got our annual code scrub coming to you on October 30th as well as then we'll resume. Your deliberations on the other UGA proposals. Particularly NUCSEC, at this point, we're expecting that to be NUCSEC, Sumas, Everston, Columbia Valley and Birch Bay. And then getting into November, we'll have drafts of Chapter 2, planning this chapter, continued UGA deliberations. Bellingham, Ferndale and Blaine hopefully. After the de-annexation vote, or that might have to go until. We're sort of plugged in some extra meetings for you. Eileen has gotten you guys. It's resource lands that includes Merrill. Yes.
So how's that process work with the UGA? Seems like we've hit them all a couple of times now. When we said we're hitting those same ones again that we've, other than Blaine, I think we've gone through all of them.
Right. We've had public hearings, which is one of the things we're going to do for all of them except Blaine. Now let's see what deliberations and remember we had some comments. BDS had some comments and some requests of some of the cities to address some issues that we had raised. About expansion into agricultural lands, expansion into flood plains, capital facility plans, variety of things. So the cities are working on preparing what they're calling addendums to their proposals to address our comments and concerns. So that's what we're waiting for. We're hoping to get those back, I think, by the end of next week. So we would roll that back in then that sort of incorporated into this schedule is a holding right there. We can continue our deliberations. We've got to hold another public hearing, but it's just time for you guys to make recommendations.
Okay, time now for open session for public comment. Eileen would take over please?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting. This meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the online, to the county website. As noted on our website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to items that are scheduled on the agenda for a public hearings tonight. Which as Mark mentioned, it is the Chapter 5 Utilities and the Open Space Application. We will start with those in the room first.
Point of order please. If we're not allowed to speak during the public hearing, then are we allowed to speak? Point with the public hearing?
For the.
Like the utility chapter is my issue.
Yes, during the public hearing, that's when you will speak on the utility chapter.
Thank you.
So I'll start in the room first. You will be given three minutes each. I have those who signed up. I have Lisa Guthrie, Charmin.
Bye later.
Speaking about Blaine.
Yeah.
Okay, you might want to have Alex speak first, explain.
Okay.
Why he can't find their counsel. Maybe that would just help context for any comments.
Okay, I will allow. Alex Wang, if you want to speak first.
Yes, good evening commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So first off, I just wanted to apologize to the commissioners that. We had to withdraw our UGA proposal this evening. But based off current circumstances, we felt that was best to take a little additional time to work out some issues. And you know, taking, you know, with that time, it will also allow us an opportunity to coordinate with our. Friends and neighbors to the South Birch Bay and continue to work on some of the issues there. City Council, you know, has directed staff, city staff to, you know. Figure out a way to bring what I'm going to call the Semiamu Highlands property into our urban growth area. And we do remain committed to that, but we will likely revise our UGA proposal. Do not have a UGA swap. There's a couple of technical issues that we're working out with Waukamhaw County staff on that UGA swap. Proposal and so we will likely be revising revising that. And then of course, there is this November 4th de-annexing, de-annexation ballot measure. That really will kind of dictate where the city of Blaine goes with our urban growth. Proposal and we're going to need a little time to see the results of that that ballot measure so. With that, I just wanted to. Say I'm sorry that we've taken a little bit of your time this evening and, but I think this will allow us to refine our proposal to put the city in Waukamhaw County. In the best position to adopt a good urban growth proposal for the city of Blaine. I suspect it may look somewhat similar, but we'll be working on on those details and I could see potentially some boundary changes. So it's not necessarily appropriate for me to take questions at this time as a open public comment session, but if any commissioners have any questions, I would. Encourage you to just send me an email. I'd be happy to respond or give me a phone call so. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Guthrie.
Good evening. Thank you commissioners. My name's Lisa Guthrie. I'm a resident of Birch Bay in Waukamhaw County. So I'm going to spare you my full three minute statement. I appreciate Blaine pulling their proposal for now. As that does give them more time to communicate with Waukamhaw County Good Mining and Development. The Birch Bay and Waukamhaw County residents, staff and Planning Commission. Birch Bay stands ready to meet. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Charmin Burnham.
Oh, good evening again. Um, yeah, I also had a three minute speech, so you won't have to go into that since. We're going to be delayed as far as what Alex has to say, but I appreciate the fact that he's doing exactly what we're hoping to do. Just wait. And be able to all look at that, meet with Birch Bay residents, which is one of the RCWs that. Is on the table that we should be doing is meeting with Birch Bay residents. Also, I did attend the meeting that he did have in Blaine for the residents there. And there definitely were some worrisome remarks on what he had been planning to do and. As mentioned, there's no aquifer in Birch Point, which if you live in Birch Bay, there's definitely, definitely an aquifer there. So. I hopefully he'll go back to the drawing board and be able to address that, which is one of our main concerns. So with that, thank you very much for having us.
Matt Berry.
Hello, my name is Matt Berry of Birch Bay. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I sent you via email some maps. I like to play around with GIS, so these are created with open source GIS program QGIS. And then the layers are from the Washington Geospatial Open Data Portal, so they're authoritative UGA boundaries. The aerial maps, that kind of thing, but I hope you give this a look. My printer wasn't cooperating, so I only have two toppings if anybody wants one. The first map shows the Birch Bay UGA, which is omitted from a lot of Blaine's maps. Plus the Birch Bay Census Designated Place. The second map shows all of the county roads that one would have to travel to get from. The proposed expansion area in Semiamu West Lane to downtown Blaine, which I think is useful. What I didn't mark on here is the one lane road here. The aging bridge here, the aging bridge here, the railroad crossing there that make it a real pain to get to Blaine. The third map shows topography overlaid with the city of Blaine batteries, the first day UGA batteries and the proposed expansion. From this, you can kind of tell where water's going to drain and you know, whose problem it will be. This aerial map here shows all the. Homes or potential voters excluded from the UGA expansion on Birch Point there that would kind of become a county service island I thought was. Useful for your consideration. And then the last map that I included, you've heard a lot about the historic Lincoln Road line, the extension of Lincoln Road that's kind of been the. For 20 plus years down between Birch Bay and Blaine. So I wanted to put that on the map so that you had an idea where that was, but. Any of you would like to consider some of the things that I brought to advise their email.
I think you know it.
Obviously might have it.
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much.
Tony Hadde.
So my name is Tony Hadde. I was hoping to speak after the Blaine presentation, but the opportunity has arisen anyway, so. Today I'll, I can, I'll take my three minutes, right? So, you know. I went to the, I went to the Blaine meeting the other day and there was, as someone has already mentioned, there were some things there that did concern me. And you know, I primarily today want to talk about infrastructure and flooding. I live. Just adjacent to the proposed UGA on Semiamu Drive on the west side. And so. As I say, those are two issues that I think are critical. The capacity issue also had me concerned the other day when I saw the presentation in building. It seems, you know, when you switch 500 acres for a thousand acres. Capacity changes, right? And one of the, one of the maps or one of the tables that I saw. Had an excess in residence, residences of 2,200, 2,300 residences, which. It strikes me that if you're seeing that much excess, you know. I've been to the Birch Bay Advisory Committee meeting and they talked about land grab. I've heard that kind of terminology used. And it just seems that, you know, to have that, talking about that kind of excess of residences. You know, when, and then saying we need all for a thousand acres, the two things just don't go together. So obviously this is all moot because we haven't seen the new Blaine presentation yet. But I think it was worth pointing out. As I say, infrastructure has been touched on by Matt. It's a problem. You know, I know that I've heard Blaine's council say a couple of times that. The infrastructure is, is, is good. They put a lot of work in there and they have, but I live on that side. It's not good. The roads are the best. You know, the train station, the fact that there's a four way stop sign, the train crossing, the four way stop sign. You get caught half a mile down the road, you're going to wait a long time to get across that four way stop sign. And you know, I often wondered what would happen if there was a sin arm and everyone was trying to get off. It's an island that I live on basically with one road in and out. So eight forty six seconds. The flooding is a problem. We had major flooding in 2021, as did most people. And in our area, we then hired an organization, a company of consultants, environmental consultants, consultants to find out what the major problems were. And they identified three areas. One obviously was the flooding, you know, the storm. The second one was the outdated infrastructure that's there, you know, they're talking about. Covert to 12 inches across and so on and so forth. That was problematic. And the other one was the deforestation. Now Blaine again will tell you that that deforestation is overdone with. And there's nothing we can do about it, but I would, I would suggest we'll go look on Google Earth, we'll go walk around that area because there's a lot of forest still there. So I mean, there's, there's a lot more I can talk about. I ran out of time. I realized that I really want to talk about. In the future, if I get the opportunity about this flooding, because I think that's the problem we're really going to have to be concerned about for the future. The cost of the infrastructure is going to be significant. Right? And I think it's important to take that into account. The 12 inch culverts aren't good enough. We're going to need 36 inch culverts or whatever. No, I'm out of time. I'm sorry. We've been told by Blaine, you know, that the developers will take care of it, but seriously, you know. I've dealt with develops before and I know that they'll take care of some of it. But anything that's Waukamhaw County, so on the west side, will be the responsibility of Waukamhaw County and that's going to be significant.
I've got to interrupt from that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak at this time? Seeing no other hands, I will go to the attendees. I see Bill Guyer. Do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners, Bill Guyer, Guyer and Associates in Bellingham. I represent. Julie Carney, the owner of property at 4610 Lincoln Road in the unincorporated county. You're familiar with the letter that I submit. Submitted in June and also follow up regarding the Birch Bay UGA where we. submitted in June and also follow up regarding the Birch Bay UGA, where we specifically requested that her property plus the area to the north of it be included in the UGA for Birch Bay. It was included in the DEIS and the FEIS. However, the response in the FEIS and subsequent analysis to date is non-responsive to this specific proposal that we made to the county. And that is Ms. Carney has committed that her 20 acres, plus or minus, at 4610 Lincoln Road would be designated 100% of the residential units that could be built on that property as affordable housing. 100%. Now, depending upon zoning on that, it previously was in a UR4 zone. Obviously, that'd be a minimal of 80, and then with the implementation of the new state mandates as it relates to 1220 and 1110, that density include could be increased substantially. The point that we want to make here tonight to the planning commissioners is the DEIS and the FEIS both are non-responsive to that proposal. They said nothing. We find it interesting, if not ironic, that in this age of housing crisis, and every elected official and probably every one of the planning commissioners, both county and cities, all seven, have said affordable housing is a critical need. Here we have a property owner who was willing to step into this issue to help resolve a portion of it. And it is silent in the response. Our request is, as the planning commissioners, send your recommendations to the county. You have a definitive statement as to where affordable housing sites can be accommodated. I have seen no other site in the testimony presented to the planning commission in this top plan review to date that has made anywhere near the proposal that Ms. Carney has made. I recommend the commissioners specifically look at that request and include it in its recommendations to the council to be included in the UGA for affordable housing needs. You have a property owner who wishes to pursue it. The county has it as a policy. Let's do it together, and I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I have Danielle Gahn. Would you like to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Danielle Gahn. I'm the executive director at the Birch Bay Chamber. I'm also a member on the Birch Bay Community Advisory Committee. I had a plan to say a whole bunch of stuff today, and I'm going to pivot those comments just a little bit, given Blaine's decision to pause a little bit. Our committee discussed last night and asked me to speak to the planning commission regarding some of our concerns about the swap proposal and any Blaine development on Birch Point. At the comprehensive plan open house that Alex did last week, he highlighted some of the goals of Blaine, encouraging housing closer to school, supporting the school district, encouraging housing closer to downtown and creating a vibrant city center and reducing vehicle miles traveled. I think those are great goals for the city. I don't think anybody can argue with that. However, we do feel that them expanding into Birch Point would directly contradict those goals. Growth further away from schools, that traffic commute would get worse. Residents would live further from downtown, and it would make it hard to make a vibrant city center. Additionally, the vehicle miles traveled would increase, and there's no way to drive from that area of Birch Point to downtown Blaine without using Waukam County-maintained roads, and there's concerns about the added strain that that might add on the road fund. Earlier this week, I had listened to county council discussions about the road fund, and these are that's a fund that's supported by taxes, which is paid for by residents of unincorporated Waukam County. Blaine residents don't contribute to that fund. And even though developer impact fees may help with some time some one-time funding, it's not going to address the long-term costs and impacts of expansion there. There's also concerns about stormwater and shoreline projects. That area of Birch Point is in the BBWARM district, and that district is funded by service fees by developed properties and a reduction. If that area was incorporated into the city of Blaine, they wouldn't pay those fees to BBWARM. And a reduction to that funding would limit its ability to manage stormwater, protect water quality, and restore habitat, which would affect our Birch Bay watershed. There's also concerns and questions about the de-annexation of East Blaine and the aquifer protections that it provides being within the city boundaries. When that question was asked to Alex during that meeting, there wasn't any clear information about any safeguards or management plans to protect the aquifer in East Blaine if it's de-annexed. So we're glad to see this paused and look forward to having more meaningful conversations with the city of Blaine as this moves forward, and thank you, Planning Commission, for looking out for Birch Bay.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else attending online wish to speak at this time? Thorely Booth? Do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you. I was hoping that the hearing would be tonight, but I do have a few things I'd like to say, and I'm not I have a couple of documents that I was planning to send in, but I'm not sure this is the right time to send these in. Maybe we should wait until after we really hear from Blaine, but the Waukam Environmental Council, WEC, had information sent to Blaine regarding the Blaine swap. In reviewing your study session on the UGA swap scheduled for April 28, there is no mention of any environmental considerations in looking at this UGA swap. Your focus appears to be limited only to public facilities. We ask that you correct this deficiency and direct staff to identify the required open space corridors and the environmental impacts and benefits of any UGA swap. That's the end of the quote. My comments, hopefully, the city of Blaine has corrected this deficiency, and maybe that's what they're doing with this extra time regarding identifying the environmental impacts of the annexation of West Blaine on Birch Point. According to Waukam County and Washington State documents, Birch Point contains significant areas classified as critical aquifer recharge areas, CARAs. I took the opportunity to send the planning commission a summary of Birch Bay's environmental concerns. Several factors make effective stormwater management for aquifer recharge particularly challenging in Birch Bay, especially within the critical aquifer recharge area at Birch Point. These challenges stem from a combination of the area's geology, its rapid development, and the impacts of climate change. Stormwater does run downhill, and the cost of managing the erosion, flooding, and cost of stormwater conveyance system will fall on the county and Birch Bay residents who pay rates for stormwater management. And then in the future, it will possibly be the responsibility of the new city of Birch Bay. I was also going to send in a BBWARM report on the cost of the seven projects planned in the Birch Point sub watershed. It's over $15 million. That would fall on Birch Bay, ratepayers, the county, or eventually the new city of Birch Bay. Thank you for listening, and I'm not sure I'll send those documents in now, whether this would be the correct time or to wait until after we do hear from Blaine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else attending online that wishes to speak? Seeing no other attendees wishing to speak at this time, Sharon?
Thank you, Eileen. Time now for commissioner comments. Any commissioner comment?
Let me just note for the record, this is the second last-minute cancellation from Blaine around the UGA. I don't think it's respectful of this commission. I don't think it's respectful of the public that comes in to speak. And frankly, if they give it again, I'm not inclined to support anything they want to bring here because it's just not an appropriate way to handle public time. So just to put that out there because frankly, I'm pretty upset about it. It's just just not how not how we run public.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this this is just a notification of activities. I spoke to the Waukam County under sheriff today about the capacity that the sheriff's department has to address additional population in the Columbia Valley. And I was pleased to learn that they have a satellite station there with two dedicated deputies seven days a week, which is an improvement I missed from a period previous period where there were a lot of problems out there.
So bounce a bit off Commissioner Gross's comments. The I am I have a lot of frustration with what's going on with Blaine in in large part because 11 years ago, we had discussions with Blaine about building out the infrastructure in the east part of the city, and as a council member, I I went forward with the city of Blaine proposing a mechanism for funding the infrastructure, which they said was the barrier to actually doing the annex to completing the expansion of the city. Then in 11 years, the city of Blaine has failed to follow up on that opportunity, and is now talking about de-annexing that part of the city and redirecting their activities elsewhere. The thing I've got is a fundamental challenge with that is in the 11 years that they had an opportunity to build the infrastructure on the eastern side of Blaine, what confidence will we have that they will build the infrastructure on the western side of Blaine should they get their wish to change the annexation area?
Any more commissioner comment? All right. Let's move on to approval of minutes on the 25th, 1025. There any introduction, any additions or corrections? None. Eileen, will you call the role play?
Yes. Eisenberg?
Yes.
Bright?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yeah.
Moser?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Passes.
Okay, so what we have up next in our meeting tonight is open space application. And Lauren Templeton, will you take it over?
Yes. Hello, I'm Lauren Templeton, and I'm going to be presenting one open space application today for the sake of time, and because you've seen this presentation quite a few times, I'm going to skip through a lot of the background. But let me know if you want me to go back or answer any questions.
You know, we have a lot of people here tonight, and maybe if you could briefly explain what these openings, the intent of the open space applications, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so the open space program comes from the Open Space Taxation Act, which is a concern for natural resource and the conservation of those resources. So it provides a tax incentive program. There are there are four, three different programs, and then there's the designated forest land and the open space agriculture program. Those are administered through the tax assessor's office, and they have they're for the commercial harvest of timber or for commercial agriculture. So there's normally income requirements or forest management plan that's required for those. What Alex and I administer at PDS is the Public Benefit Rating System Open Space that is separated into two different pro- programs, open space land and then open space farm and agriculture conservation land. So the open space farm and agriculture conservation land is specifically for those who were enrolled in the open space ag and maybe aren't currently farming, but they can transition to this program until they may start farming and have an income again from it, and they can transition back into the open space ag program. The application today is an open space land application, and these are scored for the public benefit. So that is for ecological benefit and recreation or public access primarily. The two DFL and OSEC programs don't require any public access because they are for commercial harvest, but the open space land generally require public access as the public benefit. So you can see here, the green is the open space farm and agriculture, the light green, dark green is designated forest land, and that is the majority of the properties are enrolled in those two programs. And then red is open space land and the turquoise, there's only a few of those properties in Waukam County, and that's that farm and agriculture conservation land. Here's an example of the worksheet. It it includes an equation associated with it, but it looks at natural resources, including streams, wetlands, scenic vistas, as well as recreation, educational opportunities. So the process is we receive, PDS staff receive applications, and then we conduct a site visit. We then rate and score that property based off of the public benefit rating system. And then we make our recommendations to the planning commission. The planning commission then can make a recommendation to either approve, deny, or partially approve the application, and that recommendation goes to council. And then council is the one that makes that final approval, either in whole and part, or they can deny the application. And then once that application is approved, if it is approved, then the tax assessor would make those adjustments to the assessed value of the property so that they can get that tax incentive on their property taxes. So for the public benefit rating system, these I went through some of the points that we look into, but it also includes this PDRS formula. And if the score comes to 45 points or higher, then staff can recommend that the application get approved. If it is below 45 points, then staff recommend the application does not get approved. That does not mean the planning commissioner council has to follow the staff recommendation. They can make an approval or denial, even if it's different from our recommendation. An important part specifically for this application today is public access is generally required, but council may waive that access requirement if there is known habitat of endangered species, archaeological sites, or wetland conservation purposes. So the application for review today is the Stevens application. This is approximately 30 acres, and they want to be enrolled in open space land. It scored us it scored 50.87 points, so it is recommended by staff for approval. And what's unique about this property is it has a Waukam Land Trust as a conservation easement across the majority of the property for its wetland conservation values. So Waukam Land Trust and the property owner have requested a waiver of public access to protect those resources. The property is just south of Everson, you can see right here, and it is in the rural zoning. And there's mapped wetlands, but there is a larger kind of wetland, forest and wetland complex. There is mature forest of up to over 100-year trees and a seasonal stream that runs through the property. I've included some photos, the soil maps. So you can see some of the mature forest, large, both seasonally and permanently flooded wetlands throughout the property. Wildlife habitat, seasonal stream. And then there is a small portion of the property on one of the parcels that is open field where the house is located. All right, any questions? I went through that pretty quickly. Yes.
How much of it is already under conservation easement?
Yeah, so it is four parcels, and three of the four parcels are under the conservation easement. So the whole forested area where the house is, I do not believe is in the conservation easement.
So but that one isn't that fourth parcel that's not in the easement, it's just the house in the field that's included in this application.
Correct. And there are wetlands in that field as well.
Commissioner Bright, go ahead.
So just comment is getting more of a question.
Yeah.
Comment is, I don't understand. Because if there are three parcels that are under conservation easement, the fourth parcel is essentially Because if there are three parcels that are under conservation easement, the fourth parcel is essentially a house with a yard. What are we getting from an open space application other than lower tax liability if there's no public access?
Yeah, so I think part of what the public benefit rating system is promoting is additional like above and beyond conservation values as well. Is one of the components of the rating system. So I think that's part of it is the willingness for a landowner to put a conservation easement on their property. They've also agreed to do. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I guess what I'm asking is if it's above and beyond, what are we, the public, getting? It's above and beyond what is already on these four lots.
Gotcha, yeah.
Base land application, if there's no public access.
They will, they have agreed to like educational opportunities and hosting public events, but in a more structured fashion. I will say. Yeah, the conservation easement is, I think. It's important and it covers the wetland area of the property, but there is still some forested areas that I believe are outside of that easement area.
Do you remember that?
I do not know. It might have been included. I don't think it was included in the package. I don't think I have enough of the conservation easement itself.
Commissioner Brown.
Neither expressing approval or disapproval, but for information purposes, when we do something like this. What we are doing is we're taking effectively taking the tax liability or the tech, the obligation to pay property taxes. From this landowner and spreading it evenly across everybody else in the county.
Commissioner gone.
So just looking at the, I don't know if you could go back to this. Yes, the one on the, the right there, just one clear, so four parcels. I'm assuming kind of in a, in a rectangle there, like sure kind of be evenly sized.
Oh, sorry, I have that incorrect. This is just pulled out of the conservation easement as the far side area. But these three are, I think it's one parcel. I thought, oh wait, no, I'm. Sorry, mixed up. It is four parcels.
So, so the, the, the property we're talking about, subject site that's going to have reduced taxes, is it all the space inside the yellow?
Yep, right.
Okay, and why is it, I think this is Nick said, the house with the yard, why? Why reduce taxes on that one?
Um, yeah, I, I think it's because of the, the wetland benefit in the field as well. And you'll see that there are some wetlands. Right in this area. That were mapped and viewed on site. So there is still some ecological value in the field area.
Okay, the, the map there is the, it's got the wetlands marked down. They're all kind of on the left side there.
Yeah, there are some wetlands mapped on the west side, left side during the site visit and you can see through like light our data too, there are. Additional kind of pocket wetlands throughout that forested area.
Give a picture of those, we could see your. Cause like the, the field, like where the houses, that looks just like a grassy field.
Yeah.
I don't really see the wetlands there. Is that on that left side?
No, this is not. So we only have these photos from the forested area other than this area. So. It's hard to tell as it's a field, but it does slope down. A ways from where the house is up over here. So there are just kind of small pocketed field wetlands.
There's butter crops, that's, that's still the indicator.
Yep, that is one of them. But I would say most of them are actually like further down. In the field.
Yeah, so. So just to clarify. They basically have three quarters of it protected and they're probably not paying taxes on it anyway to this. So they're trying to now protect the fourth lot. So by putting easement on that for no future development, then they will be. Let off the taxes for that law, isn't that the deal?
Yeah, they actually are paying taxes on all four lots.
Really?
Yeah, so that was part of the reason for them applying for this program.
I mean, you always place taxes on your property.
Yeah.
Even with a conservation? Yeah, it, it, it would do like the assessors, the assessor takes them to a, they don't count and like, okay, the value, they're, they're valued in all four as like, hey, you can build four houses here. And that has significant land value.
And I don't remember all of the details, but I do know that they have submitted that conservation easement to the tax assessor's office and it did not. Lower their taxes very much, which is part of the reason for.
Commissioner Brown.
Clarifying, it's owned at R five, it's thirty acres. So theoretically it should have six development rights, including the ones already been used.
Yes.
I read down here, it said there was one other right, but that's expired. But there's no explanation as to why. Was not five, currently five.
The conservation easement, it removed those development rights.
So then that raises a second comment, which is that we're looking at the billable lands inventory. In the county, we have a parcel. Which would come up in the billable lands inventory, having six development rights. Where apparently you don't need.
If we have, would we do that? We do look at, J I specialist looks at. Conservation easements and takes those, tax rates those out.
I'm pleased to hear the depth of the sentence.
And that, that kind of ties back to our conversation two weeks ago about the L I at Cherry Point. But you have the right there and if we're counting that, if we need a, not, not to, you know, add more stuff, but maybe we need. A zone that's something, but has no development.
Clarify a question, remind me for last time we did on the sell application. You can remove yourself from the open space land program in the future.
You can remove yourself and pay the back taxes, but you cannot reclassify to a different. Taxation program. So they could not ever reclassify to DFL or open space ag.
Okay, but they can remove, if they chose to remove one of the four parcels. If they do that as opposed to, or do they have to do all four together?
I think they could remove one of the four. Christine, are you still on?
The land trust would have a perpetual easement.
Yes, so if they wanted to remove just one parcel, they could.
And then only by seven years back taxes, Chris.
Yep, correct, correct. I can offer some background on these parcels. They were in the designated, designated forest land. Program, including the one that's entirely field. When it came time for it to sell, we found the conservation easement, which restricts harvest, prohibits harvest. And so they weren't allowed to stay in the designated forest land program. So that's why we're here.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so with all that context, which I appreciate, I mean, I live on a parcel just like this. We have a conservation easement, it's forest. If I ever apply to the open space land program to, to lower my taxes, I hope you all say no to me, just like I'm going to say no to this proposal tonight. I think it is fully protected already. The only part that isn't protected is the part that it already cleared. If they go in the open space land program for that parcel and decide to later remove it to develop more, they can. There is, as far as I can tell, because there is no public access, and I frankly don't want to see any more of these that have no public access, is a second one this year. Really upsets me because it's, it's an abuse of the program as far as I could tell. This is not in any way should perform beneficial to the public. It is reducing property taxes, property tax for one individual. That's not. Beneficial to people walking down on this and any other like that I see.
Commissioner, we should probably have the public hearing before we go too far down the road.
We need a public hearing on this one line. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Okay, so from the public hearing. Can you take over?
Yes. So this public hearing is for this open space application, O S P twenty twenty five dash zero zero one. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one in the room, we'll move to those attending online. Auto pointer, do you wish to speak at this time on this open space application? Auto pointer. I see your hand raised. I'm going to ask one more time. Do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, very briefly. Can you hear me?
Yes, is this, it's on the open space application at hand?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll be very brief. I'm Auto Pointer with Water Planning Matters dot org. And I want to support the council members' position on access to the land. Many times we have trespassing issues. And these are great opportunities for local citizens to walk on trails, enjoy the nature, observe the wildlife. Obviously at a distance if there's a bald eagle nest, but we need to see more public access to these types of lands. There's a lot of opportunities up in East Blaine, for example, that we'll be bringing forth before you. But we just have a shortage in the surface, particularly in northwest Wacom County of parks and open spaces to enjoy nature. So I really like that council members' recommendation for public access. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else attending online wish to speak on this issue? Seeing no one else, Jared.
We'll close the public hearing. Lauren, I, I'd like to bring up something. We've had some comments about no public access. And on that site. The cleared area, is there any road frontage on that cleared area or is it just a long driveway in or what?
I believe it's just a long driveway in. So there wouldn't be great parking, they could create a parking area.
And, and I ask that because in the past. I've been on a lot of these over the years and one of the things we've. Really talked about as planning commission is that we want public access. And one of the things we said, someone came in and said, well, I've got this beautiful wooded and things like that and. We eventually told them what we'd like you to do is put a place where you can park your car and put a picnic table down there in the woods. You don't have to go two hundred feet in, go fifty or seventy five. And a parking spot and picnic table so that the public can come by in and just enjoy it. And if there's a spot that that can happen, that's what I think we would like to see. All of us would like to see something where the public gets some benefit.
Yeah, and that's something we can bring to the landowners, definitely. Those concerns.
Yeah, this one, since it already has the conservation easement on it. I, you know, obviously is getting different attention because of that. I know other ones that have come. That were borderline on passing. It was recommended that we approve it if they put the conservation easement on it. You know, that because the land trust was already pursuing that. There, there is some benefit to. People wanting to put the conservation easements in and being able to be in a lower class cast. Classification because of it. If there is no benefit and it's just out of the goodness of your heart, some people will do it. Might not push others into it though. So I don't, I don't know that it, someone's a terrible person because they want to. They want to maybe get a lesser tax burden because it really does have less of a financial. Value to it. And so I, I don't always think it's the worst thing that they have a conservation easement and are in the program.
Um, I would, oh, okay, sorry. Um, yeah, I would like to say as we look into like updating this program. We've looked at a lot of other counties P B R S and they give a lot of points to conservation easements. Because it is that landowner incentive to, to do those additional steps.
Uh, yeah, I would just say, I mean, to me, it's, it's like they said, what, what's give and take. And to me, it's like. The give is that you're getting reduced taxes, the, the take is that you get public access and you have preserved land. Lands are observed, so the only thing we'd get, I think, is public access. So I would be hesitant to support this unless there was public access.
Commissioner Brown.
To your point. The examples given, uh, when there is a conservation easement granted, then they are putting it in the open space program. As if I understand correctly, this landowner bought the property with the conservation easement or a government. They bought it at a price that had been discounted for the fact that the development rights had been removed. It had limitations on it because of the conservation easement. I think he's already got his benefits, so to speak, in the, in the lower purchase price. Like several others around here, I would support it either. There's no, there is no. I don't see what public is getting for absorbing the tax cost the landowner has.
Listen, I have to, I'm just wondering if we have a, a motion to approve this. We have, don't have a motion yet, yes.
We need to make a formal motion either way, because I will make a motion to deny her.
There we go.
I can second that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gray.
I already gave my reasons. The only thing I'll, I'll clarify is that I'm not mad at the homeowner for seeking to lower the property taxes. You know, every, everyone should do what they can to, to help their own situation. I don't have any problem with that. I don't have any problem with saying. I have conservation, maybe I can also be open space. No, we should do that. And they got, as our jobs as stewards of the public purse and as. Stewards of the land, we have to look at all the things that I stated. That's why I think we should deny this application. But no, no knock on the property owner for, for applying.
And Commissioner Gray, if you said you'd make a motion to deny, but would you be more formal with your motion?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to deny the open space application for the Stevens application.
Second. You're already saying sort of.
I have a question because part of this is actually they're not trying to get their taxes lower. They're trying not to have to pay. The back taxes, right, for coming out of the forestry?
Yes, both.
No, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not the case. It's already out of forestry. Back taxes have already been paid. So they're currently valued at full market value.
Okay, so, and that happened when you, yeah, that was triggered through the sale. Wasn't triggered when the conservation easement went on, even though that's when it stopped actually qualifying?
Correct. We don't get notification when conservation easements are recorded. We take sale or transfer as our primary point of audit and that's when we go looking.
Okay.
Commissioner Brown.
I think the better route is if the landlord wants the taxes reduced. It's either door number one, provide public benefit in the form of access or something else. Or door number two, which is to argue that, as to whether the property is being overvalued because it's been. Valued based on its development rights, which can't actually be used. And that permit should be factored into the, the valuation of the property.
Commissioner, that's it.
If, if it's, if we vote to deny, is there a way for him to, this property owner to not have to start the process? All over again? If he were, is there a way to do this? Where he could come back with the pat, public access option? I am asking everybody that question.
Yeah, I think the way I understand it is you would give your recommendation to council and we would go to council either way. And share what that recommendation is.
Okay.
And then they're the ones that would make that decision.
So.
Commissioner, my turn.
So between now and then, if they wanted to maybe. Change an outcome or maybe get a more favorable outcome, they could, they could propose to offer that between now and when the council hears.
That's my question, yeah.
They could, yeah, good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, we could make a, we could make a forward recommendation to council. That the application be denied unless public benefit is established.
Would, would you amend the motion? They add that on.
That's specific public benefit. I'm happy to do that, but I think he would have to, I'd have to release his motion first.
You can move to amend, whether it's from the.
Sorry, I move to amend, I'll be forward to the council. With the recommended day, recommendation to deny unless public benefit can be established.
I'll say that.
Well, since the, they already did a public benefit rating and gave it fifty, I think you need to. Be more specific and say unless public access is granted.
Corruptness is endless.
No, no, Jim's right. I wasn't clear.
Specifies it. That's good.
Okay. Restate how it should be. I meant to take it that way, just say it's the correct way, so it's under.
Move a recommendation, council, that we deny unless public access is provided. And I will second.
Okay. And, very good. Are there any, is there any more discussion? Commissioner, my turn.
Are we going to vote on that separately or we're just voting on one, clause one?
Oh, let's, let's.
I, I just want to know, because if we're going to vote, we should vote on the amendment.
Yeah. Uh, let's vote on the amendment and then let's take a vote on the final proposal. Any further discussion? Eileen, what do you call the roll, please?
Yes. Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Musari?
Yes.
Van Dellen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes?
Commissioner Maseri?
So my issue that I still have with this is that I get the three parcels. The fourth one, to me, seems like they're just getting their home site lumped in with these other three that have a lot higher ecological benefit. I know that there's kind of a wetland in the field there, but still, um, to me, it seems like it makes us a less appealing application with that parcel in it than if it was just the other three.
Commissioner Baden?
Do that, if they were to come back and allow public access, they're giving up, if I owned that property, you are giving up a lot. You know, your privacy, your, somebody's going to come down your driveway, have a place to park. So they are giving up a whole lot more for that public benefit that we hope they come back for. Just a thought.
That would be the main access.
Yeah, that's right. That would be the main access to the, you can kind of see how that would go.
So that's her motion's been amended, so that's what it is, uh, to um, deny approval unless they provide public access. Any, any, uh, Commissioner Gray?
I was just gonna add that if they do decide to add public access, one, super cool house. Um, two, uh, it has, according to Russian, endless private trails where they stream in pond as well as establish orchards. So we already if they wanted, it isn't just about reducing their property taxes. Just saying, but also just a bit of the sound's got really
Commissioner Maseri?
So the motion is to, the motion is to recommend not approval unless this happens. So if you vote yes, you're voting to pass it on with a no vote unless of this. If you vote yes, I don't know what you're
If you're voting for the motion, which is a yes.
A yes would be to deny unless.
Yeah, and then a no is, I guess.
You're opposed to the motion?
Right, okay.
Yes, if you're in favor of the motion, no.
Sure. I think the motion is to deny, no. Yes means no, no means yes.
Just to clarify, it's not exactly that, because the motion is deny unless they do
That is correct.
can happen.
Yes.
So a yes would be saying, I'll vote for the motion. Any further discussion? Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Hanson?
Yes.
Musari?
Yes.
Van Dellen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes?
I decided to ask for a note to be added, so you know that this vote. From, if I cancel, cancel, yeah.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you, John.
And so now it's Lucas Clark and 2025 update, chapter five, Billings.
Hello. Uh, good evening commissioners. I'm Lucas Clark with PDS here to present chapter five, utilities of the comprehensive plan. Utilities is generally defined as all lines and facilities used to distribute, collect, and transmit or control electric power, natural gas, petroleum, telecommunications, water, and sewage. Most non-regional utilities are operated by special districts, private companies, or the cities. As you may remember, uh, from the 115 to 230 kilovolt conversation earlier this year, electricity, natural gas, petroleum, and some other utilities are inherently regional and are also regularly regulated directly and indirectly, uh, at state and federal levels. It is the intent of this chapter to support providers of electricity, natural gas, petroleum, telecommunications, broadband, and other utilities in fulfilling their public service obligations required by state law to provide service on demand to existing and future customers. It is also the intent of this chapter to minimize any negative effects resulting from provisions of that service on the residents, infrastructure, and environment of the county. This chapter generally includes utility background information, including GMA goals, references to countywide planning policies, and private districts. It has goals and policies related to trends in utility technology, electric power, natural gas, petroleum, telecommunications, permitting process efficiency, impediments to the provisions of utilities, regulatory controls encouraging energy conservation, utility corridors, natural gas, and hazardous liquid transmission pipelines, water supply, sewage treatment, and solid waste management, among other things. The chapter is reviewed by Wacom County Departments, Water and Sewer Districts, Major Utility Providers, PUD Number One, YR One Planning Unit, and others. Suggested changes are shown in the document provided. I have county representatives from Public Works, Health and Community Services, and board members from the YR One Planning Unit online to answer questions from the commission. Changes were also made based on the executive guidance and Council Resolution 2202-36. After the public hearing is concluded, I can bring the chapter on screen and we can move on to your proposals.
Public hearing? All right, open the public hearing? Go ahead, argue.
As a reminder, this public hearing is for only chapter five utilities. You'll be given three minutes. Does anyone in the room want to speak at this time?
Yes.
You'll be given three minutes?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
And then please state your name for the record.
Yes, Mike Kaufman. There we go, um. Little background on me, uh, my fingerprints are all over this document. Uh, back in the inception of the comprehensive plan, uh, it was an electric issue that we were dealing with and, uh, so I started there. There used to be, I mean, this is where big money lives, big corporations and the access to right of way and the distribution of utilities. It's where eminent domain used to be mentioned, but that got struck out. Uh, at the time, we led the state and almost the country and the world the first time that we were planning utilities, and I'm very proud of the work that we did then. Uh, the inception was around an electric issue. And that's where we got a lot of the, uh, it was related to the NOPE campaign at the time, uh, where we stated it were a unique location to Canada and, uh, utilities and energy that exists up there and accesses America. It's where trends in technology language was added. EMF electromagnetic fields was part of our uh, conversation at the time and the language came out of that. Um, citing of utilities and corridors came out of that initial discussion. Uh, with the pipeline explosion in Bellingham, I asked the county council if I could chair under the auspice of the utility chapter to discuss the pipelines. Uh, and also at that time, there was a GSX gas pipeline bringing energy out of Alberta. And they were coming in to Wacom County through Sumas to then go underneath the Sabre Sea and access Nanaimo. I almost personally got that one, defended it and got it nixed. And now the new line from Canada into British Columbia is the result of the action that we took there. Um, franchise agreements came out of that, the, the existence of franchise agreement. An initial example of that was Cascade Natural Gas, had a 25-year franchise agreement. And because of a policy that was stated in there out of that committee, that franchise agreement now got limited to seven years. Um, it's where intervenor status was written into the language. And at the time, I had to plead with county council to take intervenor status on the GSX gas pipeline. And currently, well, I'll talk about this later. So those were things that came out of this that I was directly involved in in the language that we'll be dealing with in this thing. There are specific changes that I have that I'd like to make to this, uh, to this chapter. Uh, under policy five, five M dash two, it talks about intervenor status applying to pipelines. Intervener status should apply to anything that the county has access to. And I'll use an example. The discussion on Skagit River and the Seattle City dams. We have a right to be at the table on that discussion. And it never came up. We're not sitting there. Why aren't uh,
Hold for a minute, because your, your time's run out.
Oh, shit.
And we have some, really, excuse me. Well, you have some really interesting information. And what I'd like to do is I think you're going to hang around here and listen to it.
I will.
And commissioners may want to ask you some questions. You could answer some, if we go.
If you'd like, I can email your comments.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah. I wanted to let you keep going, but I understand.
Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one in the room, I'm going to move to the attendees. Anyone that's attending online that wishes to speak? Seeing no other hands, chair?
Close, close public hearing? Go ahead, Lucas. You?
Yeah. Oh. Can I share my screen here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or yes, soon.
There we go, alright. There we are. Um, are you seeing the introduction, chapter five?
Yep.
Great. Um, what would the commission like?
Commissioner Maseri?
Are we just working through this? Sounds like it. Um, I got a question on, uh, five dash six.
I, what, which?
Uh, I've got it as page five dash six.
Five M dash six?
No, just page five six.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, I do too.
Sorry.
You know, all policies are also five, six, seven.
Yeah, so on five six, you got five C ten and five C eleven. Can you explain the difference between those two? It seems like they're saying the same thing.
And while you're answering that, can you explain what symmetrical service means?
Symmetrical service means, uh, upload and download speeds are the same. So oftentimes, uh, download speeds are much faster and upload speeds are much slower, generally speaking. Um.
Did you expand on why that's an issue?
Uh, it's one of the goals of, um, the Washington State Commerce in their BEAD Act, broadband equity access, is to have one gigabyte, uh, symmetrical service up and down. Um, as far as the differences between 10 and 11. So I think 11 just speaks to equity, uh, whereas, um, 10 just speaks to generally broadband service throughout the county.
I mean, support equitable and broadband access affordability and quality for, I don't know, to me, it seems like you don't need five C dash ten, but.
This is similar to what the city of Bellingham did, uh?
I mean, five E dash 11 says you're trying to give all residents and businesses one gig. Uh, and that seems like that's it's worth the efforts to achieve symmetrical gigabyte broadband throughout the county. I just to not have more verbiage, unless there's a real big difference, I would combine the two.
We could. Yeah. Yeah, that's the commission's will.
Make motion?
Well, you know. Commissioner Hattler?
This relates to the same passages because I find five C ten to seem to be cryptic jargon. Gigabit. Gigabit broadband. I mean, I think you should write things that mean something to people who are engineers. I'm, I think there should be a way to, to say this in a way that's common language.
Say like 100 megabytes instead of gigabyte?
Maybe you have a word.
Well, no, well, to your point.
I, I think it's a typo. Yeah.
Oh, okay, because that
Yeah, it's just a typo.
And I just wonder if being this specific is good in such a technical realm where things are changing so fast. I wonder if we could have more, more general recommendations that aren't tied to specific targets that could be outdated in six months.
Just say broadband. Broadband covers it.
Yeah.
Even broadband's outdated.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brown, go ahead and make your comment, and then we're going to go to Commissioner Gray.
Yeah, no, I think gigabit is you give it broadband is specific because it's talking about a level of service. It's a bit like saying we're going to build a highway here instead of a laneway. So.
Commissioner Gray, go ahead.
Um, so I'll move to strike five C ten and amend five C eleven to remove the word and between equitable and broadband. I think that's just a typo. Um, and to add, uh, throughout the county to the end of five C eleven.
I can't.
You was louder.
I ran, I ran for that one.
Alright. Uh. Lucas, could you read that back to us, what the results will be? Oh. Moving on. Okay. Or what they would be providing with? Yeah.
That's it?
Uh, support equitable broadband access affordability and quality for all residents and businesses with a target of one gigabyte symmetrical service throughout the county.
So we have a motion to strike that one?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm seeing a lot of nodding. Is that what everybody thinks we should do? Okay, go ahead. Lucas, go ahead and strike that. We, we concur with Commissioner Gray.
It really is. Commissioner Maseri just put words to it, so. I know it's great.
Did you do it? One more, one by one?
He was the one who brought this up. I made the motion, but mostly just to effectuate, I think, Commissioner Maseri's excellent point. Yeah. Happy to, happy to mend the minutes later, just move it over. Did we move that by acclamation?
We did.
On to something else, okay.
Along with the policy five ten, because that was part of, five C ten, that was
Yeah, it was one. Did you want to go? Alright, um, I'll go through it. Yeah, I mean, I would know, no one else is raising their hand, so. Let's move this forward. Uh, five R three, um, which is, I have no idea what page it is. Um, says the majority of future growth and development should be directed towards urban growth areas that have the greatest available municipal dollar supplies for future growth. Um, I was just curious if we meant to say the majority of future, or if we're saying urban growth areas are referring to capital urban growth areas, UGAs, or urban areas and their UGA, because I think what we're probably trying to say is that they should be going towards urban areas, cities that exist, and the UGAs outside of them, not just UGAs as we've been exceptionalizing them recent meetings.
So just in terminology, in GMA, cities and UGAs are synonymous.
Okay.
A city is a city of the UGA.
It's a urban area. And that's why, that's what I'm gonna understand, just because I hadn't, you know, my head's been wrapping our UGAs the last few meetings. So I guess just a friendly, uh, note here is we say future growth twice and we could just strike the last three words of five R three. Just for clarity, I think.
But I'm just, we expand the size of this. That's why I'm reading mine.
Well, there you go. Thank you.
Thanks, I'll make a figure there. On behalf of those over forty, thank you.
I mean, assuming folks are good with a, a, a motion to just friendly strike the last three words of that for clarity, um, then yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, seeing no Jeters. Commissioner, Dan, were you asked it?
Oh, uh, yes, I had a question sort of about the. The chapter overall, um, I guess the, the state has asked us to sort of. Add a couple of lenses when we look at these chapters, um, you know, one is about housing, uh, one of the climate, and then the one about is about tribal consultation. Uh, I didn't, I didn't see a lot about tribal consultation here, um, and I think this, I mean, the stuff we're doing is all. Because on land, it's probably near tribal, like places where they have their land, whatever. Um, could you kind of walk me through a little bit about where, where you reference? I mean, you don't have to talk about it like in every single paragraph, I'm just saying. But there should probably be some section where like, hey, by the way, let's make sure we get told tribe, we're doing this kind of stuff.
There are not a lot of references to that that I found in this chapter. I reviewed it today and, uh, I can't think of one off the top of my head. Um, as far as consulting the tribes.
We, uh, we have. A tribal consultation follow, goals and policies in chapter two, land use. Chapter, uh, twelve, climate element, and in chapter thirteen. Eleven, the shoreline zone. So. We think we've covered. All the tribal, tribal coordination policies. Matter of fact, you'll see when we get into those other elements that we're trying to get consistency. In our tribal coordination policies, all three of those. Instead of having different policies compared to ourselves. We're all trying to be consistent with that.
Do, do you feel like this one, nothing adheres needs? Tribal consultation?
Not specifically, that isn't already addressed in chapter two land use or shoreline's chapter. And the climate change chapter.
I think Jim was waiting, working.
Oh, yeah, I've, go ahead. Bruce would like to also note that they do have a, in a relationship with their water, their water supply and. Their, their utilities, but I don't think we need to. Reference, reference, reference them redundantly, but I would like to make, uh, amendment to policy five P. Which is on page five dash eighteen, you roll that way. Have to, uh, I'm involved with the. Water resources area one, uh. Planning unit with environmental pockets, and we're talking about these water supply. And water quality issues as they relate to. Being able to support, uh, all sorts of uses, domestic farming and, and environment. Fish, for instance, and, uh, five P talks about, uh, what developing more storage systems. But it doesn't talk about. Supporting implementation of water use efficiency systems, which have been shown to be the. Single most cost effective way to in- increase availability, availability of water. Not necessarily enough to take care of the whole problem, but a very significant factor to a- address. The situation. So I'd like to propose that we add. Policy five P dash seven. Which is. Encourage and support. The, the broad implementation of water use efficiency practices.
Just to add to that, like the ag industry, which I'm tied with so tightly, have gone to the drip system. And the, from the broadcasting irrigation to the drip to the, it's amazing what they've done in the last. Twenty years, yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the cities are working on it and in, individual people put showers. We do, we don't, but. Um, so I just think if we're talking about availability of water, we should. Throw in, uh, a cloth about water use efficiency. And I, and I, is there, do I have a second?
Beat me to it. Do we want me, you want me to repeat that?
Uh, yes, in one second here, I've got. I think what I heard.
Somewhere else?
Encourage and support the broad implementation of waters.
Alright. I don't think that's exactly correct. If you could read it to me.
Well, practice may be redundant, but. Practices, yeah, I guess that's, maybe you don't need practices. I think it looks good.
My friendly amendment, work on, maybe change your water, use efficiency, water conservation.
Uh, either one's fine. That, this is the most trendy way to call it. I don't know where they are. Okay, everybody.
Question, uh, because I, somewhere in my head, I remember reading, like, I feel like in the chapter, there's a place where we talk about water efficiency as well. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm scoot through here, I don't, uh, I don't.
I was looking at the new, sorry, may I? I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
Um, I was looking at some of the new, um, water supply on page five thirteen on my other screen here. And there is some new language from the CBWS, the CWSP that, uh, is being updated and. Plan is scheduled for completion by December twenty twenty five. Um, I didn't see the word efficiency in there.
I know. I, I think we talk about it either in chapter eight under ag resource. Or in chapter ten, the environment. You, you haven't seen yet, we haven't completed that. The repeat, the update of that, but I think it's, it talks about water use.
And then this way, this would apply to, um, municipal, you know, as well, and, and, uh. But water districts, that sort of thing, right?
Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I actually think there are separate issues and. Because ag, ag water consumption technology and domestic water consumption technology are completely different. And I would make the point that Washington State's. Calculations is sixty-five gallons a day per person. For water consumption. And Melbourne has now got a downfall less than forty-two gallons a day for everything. Well, that's including, I believe it's including industrial and professional.
Toilets.
Is, is everybody okay with this addition?
I'm doing a final vote or?
No, and so everybody is. We've got a hundred percent of saying yes, we're okay with this. Yes, you need to put a record. Lucas?
Yes.
Would you put a note, would you put a comment that that was approved by the planning commission unanimously? We, we had a, a consensus.
I like the work session approach of like, if it's unanimous, let's just. It's just like, if someone objects and wants to vote, you can just object, we'll do a vote.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
I like to make a motion. SP dash eight. Recognize that rural, rural residential development. Is virtually non-consumptive with water. Because of all the. Dry, water, black water is returned back into the ground and into the aquifer.
It is a bad place.
That's, it's everywhere.
Sorry, where'd you put that?
And it's recognized that rural residential. Development. Is, is effectively non-consumptive of water. Because it's like. The water is returned to the ground after use.
I don't know if a corporate read of that.
What would you?
Tell the truth.
Substantially non-consumptive.
I'll second it.
Commissioner, happen.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with it if it's substantially. Non-consumptive, because if somebody is watering outside. Using sprinklers, it's evaporation, that's the event, so it wouldn't be hundred percent non-consum- non-consumptive.
Uh, I was limiting it to residential.
Well, I mean, you can have up to X acres of, of, uh, agricultural, gardens, pasture, et cetera, with your intent well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's entirely true, because one. Yeah, if you're gonna do any irrigation around your house, there's a lot of evaporation that happens there. With most septic systems, you have a lot of evaporation, especially the more of the ones we're getting pushed towards. They don't infiltrate at all, right? So there, you know, they overflow sometimes in the wet seasons, but largely the dry seasons, they're in a, you're there in a swimming pool, you know? And so. And that's also depends where you draw your water from. So if you're drawing it from down deeper in an aquifer. Right? Or if it's drawing from a water body, some subsurface. I don't know that it's always going back into that same thing, right? So I, I kind of disagree with the statement.
So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to amend mine, by the way, is to, to be. The human, uh, human use or human consumption. Um, sorry, in, yeah, internal, interior consumption of water. Is substantially non-consumptive. Of the water supply. To your, to your point though. Septic drain fields by definition have to be infiltrated, but it's not, does, it's not evaporative. And any septic drain field system that is showing as full of water is. Uh, not, is in violation of the health code.
And my, mine goes straight down, it has to go down. It was, it's a pressure mound and it was built that way.
A lot of those mound systems don't go down, they're got liners in them.
Boy, mine does.
They've got liners in them and they largely evaporate. And they, you have to have certain amount of separation from groundwater and, and, um. Finish grade, because they do know that they overflow, especially when, you know, in the winter, but.
With a liner.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want that on my place, man.
I mean, I've never, I've never heard of this.
It's really one of the most common ones we put in.
How do they fertilize their grass then?
Make sure, Greg.
Uh, I think it's super interesting, you know, and, and I was looking up like what, how, to the point about what ecology would say, um. From their twenty eighteen study, they assume a not, a ten percent consumptive factor for indoor domestic water use and ninety percent consumptive for outdoor irrigation.
There we go.
I think my question. Or including this as a policy is what is the goal from recognizing that? Within the context of the utilities chapter. Some fascinating, I think it's super cool, but I, I just, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm reading up because I'm. I'm frustrated by this discussion that rural, rural development is. As is the consumptive factor of, of the water supply. When in fact, it's urban development that is the consumptive factor, because all the wastewater is dumped in the ocean. None of it's returned back into the streams, none of it's returned back to the ground.
Hey, where are we at? What's our motion here? Uh, Lucas, which one is, is the latest motion?
I couldn't quite hear the exact motion. I wrote down what I thought it was. I believe we are working on this one right here.
Okay.
Um, I, but I would defer to the, uh, commission on.
Well, it, it was recognize human consumption.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh. What was the thing that they said, ten percent, the OESM was what?
Uh, that, that. Indoor.
Recognize indoor, indoor. Indoor water use is substantially non-consumptive. Of a water, of the water supply, is what I was trying to say.
Before he withdrew it?
Yeah.
It's our, are we, are we withdrawing it or are we editing it?
Well, no, how much interest is there in pursuing this?
Go with withdraw. For sure.
Um, if we take a look at, uh, page five dash nineteen, um, goal, uh, five S.
Or, you know, five R.
Uh, just five S. So new, a new, uh.
Sorry.
Say five S?
Yeah, the pa- the, the page that I have is five dash one nine, the policy. The goal, yeah, that was sweet, excellent, perfect, sounds good. So a new, a new section, um, I think I kind of get it, like, we're gonna try and. Understand more about like. How much water does agriculture need? How much water does we first need? But could you kind of walk us through this, this new section? What, what's the? What's sort of the, the, in layman's terms, what's the, what's the goal here?
So I would, uh, defer to, actually, I, I think we have some, um, people from the YR One Planning Unit. Online, uh, Kaya Hayes, uh, is a. Member of that, and I would defer to them. I wasn't actually in the meeting where the suggestion was made. So if the council would recognize her to, uh, speak on that, that would be great.
Yeah, please go ahead, Lucas.
Mr. Chair, also, uh, Henry Byerlink is in the audience from representing the planning unit.
Great, thank you commissioners. And yeah, Henry, feel free to jump in, um, if you. Have any additions that you think would strengthen the summary of the planning unit discussion. Um, really the high level goal for this suggested goal addition. Came from our overall discussion of the chapter, um, and the idea that. Uh, not only, you know, should water availability be driving growth, but. You know, uh, water availability and planning should align with our. Um, sort of vision for all land uses, uh, you know, within this planning horizon, and so. Um, you know, the school of a hundred thousand acres of conserved ag land necessitates that, you know, the infrastructure. Exists to be able to transfer. Uh, water rights and usage, you know, where, wherever that land ends up being designated, um. Another theme I think that was woven into this, but maybe not as explicitly listed. Um, maybe it's further down the page, uh, but. Uh, the idea that, uh, there's a desire not to plan growth in such a way that we would be increasing. Reliance on, um, exempt wells in the future. Um, understanding that there is more to be understood. About, um, groundwater use and its impact on surface water, um, at scale. Are there any specific questions about specific policies that commissioners have?
Uh, you, you just kind of follow up for that one. So, um, when you use the phrase accurately assess and quantify, um. Who will be assessing and quantifying in the light that we're in adjudication, which like twenty years, at the end of the day, it's gonna be the court that. So who, who tries to accurately assess and quantify now in the short term, in the next five or ten years versus the court, which is gonna be. Doing that in a much more granular detail over the next thirty or forty years.
Yeah, so I think the intent of the assessment is to sort of parallel, right? So the court is assessing. And quantifying water rights, and these policies are targeted at assessing and quantifying water needs. Um, so that we might kind of proactively anticipate. And these policies are targeted at assessing and quantifying water needs, um, so that we might kind of proactively anticipate. Where the gaps may be, um, as it pertains to each of these distinct use groups. Uh, and so I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Henry, um, I think the intent is just that. Uh, the county and, you know. Other water districts, uh, water service districts and purveyors sort of. Work to fill in the gaps, um, in terms of. What are developable acres, um, how many of those acres have existing water rights or anticipated? Um, you know, access to water supply in the future and how many. Lots or parcels are sort of falling through the cracks and maybe don't have. An immediate tie in, uh, to the water needed to be able to fulfill their intended use.
Make sure done. Um, and then, uh, like, I feel like a lot of that work perhaps sort of been done in the comprehensive water plan, um. Did, how does this tie in with, like, are we, how does it tie in with that plan?
Yeah, so, you know, some of our comments, uh, were consistent, uh, both for the utilities chapter. And in what we submitted, um, on behalf of the Y R one planning unit, uh. For this most recent, uh, version of the coordinated water system plan, um. Our sense of. The way that data was categorized and aggregated in the coordinated water system plan is that, um, it wasn't, um. It, it was aggregated to the point of not being able to parse out, um, on a level of granularity needed to really answer some of those questions. So. Um, you know, the, the plan references the legal designation of like indeterminate for water systems, um. Over a certain size, I can't remember the criteria, particularly within the C W S P, um. It, within the tables that are included, uh. But there's a bit of work to be done to tease out more of the specifics in terms of numbers associated with each of these zonings.
Ye- yes, I think I, you're, you're right in that the, the coverage water plan identifies things mostly by like water, like district or like, you know, Deer Creek, whatever it is. Um, and give it water, you have hookups, those kind of things. Um, and you're asking for, in this, in this thing, we'd be asking for, uh, more of analysis on, um, water by, by land use zone. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that's.
Okay, makes sense. Um, and I don't. You're Henry?
Yeah, I'm Henry, you know. Yeah, I always that, I kind of did a good, great job of that, but I think the general that in unit has talked about it. Finding consistency between water availability and what's going on with water policy and land use policy. And finding disconnects in many places and gave, uh, many comments in several different areas. Utilities is a new one. We've never really tried, touched on that before, but. In this case, we do see some pipelines and storages and those kind of things that have never been dealt with before, especially on non-hottable water. Which is what I guess is going to be used. That is not addressed at all in utilities until now. So we really appreciate, we made a lot of these comments and appreciate the staff incorporating much of it in the, in what you suggest here, so.
Yeah, thank you, Henry. That's a great nuance.
Yeah, I mean, actually, to your last point, Henry, you, you, you raised this issue that I know we've been in discussions about before. The only real new source of, of. Ag water is going to come out of the mouth of the Noxag. Just before it hits saltwater. Because, and that's effectively limitless because, but, you know. You get it five feet before it hits saltwater, what do you care, right? Um, but the problem is they. What was that?
The two.
The fist carrier.
Yeah, well, no, because it's just before it hits the saltwater.
Right, they're migrating.
There's, oh, I mean, obviously you don't suck them up the pipe.
There's, there's a, there's a saltwater and freshwater mixing zone that's tied in with the. With this, this, uh, salt, saltwater wetlands, there's this whole.
Yeah, it's a bit more nuanced than.
Yeah, certainly.
But in terms of volume, it's the only place you can really get it from that doesn't really have a, uh, a, any other impacts. Or has minimal impacts, let's say, manageable impacts, maybe, put it that way. But the point is, from a utility's perspective, you'd need to run the pipes. From there and the pumps to bring it up to the exo, so that's not a challenge. What do you have?
Uh, I would just add, uh, a lot of the, the context of these, this, these specific policies. Is, uh, trying to, right, adjudication, as Kai has said, is just addressing water rights. Senior to junior. But it doesn't do anything, it's not gonna do any planning for water supply, and that's, that's, this is getting it, right? Okay. If we're gonna have winners and losers out of adjudication, how do we make sure that those. Folks who maybe don't get the water rights, but we still need it for ag or for industry or for growth. How do we get that? And that's a whole separate parallel process. Um, initiated under the Y R one watershed management board, um, process, but, uh. That operates under a different, uh, operating scheme and, uh. Has its own challenges, but that's where the large supply planning is kind of going through. And so you'll, there'll be a lot more about this in the environment as well.
All right, like you said, uh. One of my objections when we had the choke point discussions is that, is those guys wanted five thousand, sorry, five million gallons a day of freshwater out of the Noxag. To stop the coal pile from catching fire. On dust pressure, and, and that was according to like ten thousand or twenty thousand homes. And not to mention the ag, ag, yes, right, and that, and their withdrawal is, is. A little bit further upstream from the mouth of the Noxag. And the other comment I'll just show you is, we also got a lot of discussions about water storage upstream. The problem is it's gonna be above the area where the fish migrate. That's gotta be in somewhere it's geologically stable. And those two things basically eliminated everything. Up in the mountains.
No dam. No dam.
No dam.
So where are we with this? Oops, sorry.
Anything more?
Make sure, Greg. Um, we're in general, right, we're, we're moving off of five S. For five. S.
Yeah.
But what's, why make sure work still, um. I guess open question, and then I probably have a motion, but. I want to make sure this isn't just specific to my experience in, in, in the, in, in Lockup County. Someone else just get garbage cell phone service pretty regularly and data service, or is it just A T and T? Just, I mean, everywhere. Like lots of places.
It's been a while.
Yeah, but I mean, like, it's consistently not great. In a lot of places. I'm just like straw pulling and curious.
Uh, there's dead zones. Trying to get on Verizon, then you go to Yes, Zoom, and all of a sudden you're Verizon there.
Cool, okay, just wanna make sure it wasn't my particular personal A T and T experience going into their places. Yeah, it could be just. I, I, I mean, hey, I, I come hot to try, I get it. Uh, okay, then I'll make a motion for a new policy five C twelve. Um, to state actively encourage and coordinate with wireless carriers to expand and upgrade. Cellular voice and data networks countywide. Comma, ensuring reliable coverage in all communities and along major transportation corridors. If there's.
Let's get that.
I will, I will certainly restate.
Next second, sounds, sounds good, love.
Here, uh, I'll wait a second.
It's shocking how poor the coverage is in this county.
Well, yeah. Well, it. As a consumer, you're probably better at Verizon.
I'm, I'm Verizon.
And I heard that, uh, even Tim O'Callaghan surprised me personally, so best I have that.
I can tell stories, but they, and they go with the motion, but they're unfortunate. Um, out in the middle of Bird's Bay Drive with your cell phone, could you have connection for one minute? Until it drains the battery on your cell phone because it's a weak. Lucas?
Yeah.
Five C eleven.
Thank you.
Five C eleven.
Wonder, he's, he's wandering around over there.
Are we changing, are we mending that one?
It's no, and it's a new.
Gonna find it.
He's just, it's already twelve.
Well, I think we struck one, so I think that's, so I think there, so I think it's the new five C twelve, yeah, and so, yeah.
So, new five C twelve.
Policy five C twelve, and then.
I got to actively collaborate and encourage, and then I, I couldn't hear the rest of it, I apologize.
So actively encourage and coordinate. With wireless carriers. I'm gonna pause because I'm not seeing anything on screen, so just wanna make sure not run ahead of you.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so with wireless carriers to expand and upgrade cellular voice and data networks countywide. Comma, ensuring reliable coverage in all communities and along major transportation corridors, period.
Give me one second to catch up.
Give it a second.
Yes, yeah, yeah, okay.
So here this time, I got at least. Don't have an emergency on H Street Road, I can tell you that. And not have an emergency there.
But if I could specifically cite a cell tower like right in the middle of like. The Silver Beach neighborhood, I would. Super God on North Shore, I lose.
There's anti-cell people up there.
I'm sure there are, that seems like, that kind of place where that would occur, I believe it.
Definitely. Their location is a freak.
Pardon me, just give me one more second here, okay. Uh, we've got. Uh, actively encourage and coordinate with wireless carriers to expand and upgrade cellular data and voice countywide. If you can read the rest of it again for me?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was cellular voice and data networks countywide.
Voice. Data networks countywide.
Comma, ensuring reliable coverage. In all communities. And along major transportation corridors. Specifically at this room.
You're, you're a board fight, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, like, um, it usually works like a computer, not my phone. For some reason. Yeah, it does, depending on where I'm sitting.
And that's the only one.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, it's for real.
I mean, all over Grandview Road and, and I five, portal where there's another gen zone.
Okay. I think I'm close. I'm not sure if that is actually what you wanted.
Look right now. Uh, only changes, uh, in communities should be I E S. Uh, and, and then after that, it's along major transportation corridors, not ensuring data coverage, just. And along major transportation corridors. Cool, and I guess the only other question is if countywide says we capitalize or not. I, I never remember. But probably.
Oh, probably not.
It's, either way, yep, it does.
Did we get a second on it?
Yes.
Yeah, we're over here. Thank you. Is everybody okay with this? Okay. With the people online, is it? Oops, it went away. Anita, still there? Richard Eisenberg, are you okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, question done.
A question about, uh, 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 fusion. Page five E.
I was wondering, so can I ask about that?
Yeah.
Apparently the public utilities department is, is looking at doing fusion.
Is, has billions of dollars sitting around to.
Yeah, that just, I just struck this a little bit like. So, we're gonna do interstellar travel or something, I don't know. Um, so page five eight, uh, policy five E top seven. Support Walkham Public Utility District energy efficient programs and exploitional alternative energy resources such as geothermal and fusion. Um, you know, there's some really smart minds working on fusion. I know there's some breakers now and then, super excited about the future, but, um, I don't think Walk County is gonna be leading the way in, in fusion. So yes, I mean, the question I would have, if, if, if it's okay, it's, it says comment from P U D email, so I'm curious if Lucas could talk to.
Yeah, yeah, somebody had to put that in.
It doesn't even have fusion on it.
In red?
You're looking in the wrong place.
Can you tell me the, the policy spot where that is again? I apologize.
Uh, yeah, it's a policy five H dash seven.
Okay.
And the packet from page five dash.
I think that there's been, this is a revised staff's version I'm looking at, but.
Uh, what you say?
You think so?
We are looking at everyone.
Maybe.
Oh, uh, Lucas, what are you?
What are you looking at?
What are you looking at? Because what you're looking at is different from what I'm looking at.
Yeah, same as different than what I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's not.
This should be the most recent one that was sent out to you?
It was in your package.
Uh, no.
No, what's in the packet just says, and fusion. It's an email, subsequent email we got.
Do we get revised? Do we get revised?
Lucas, didn't you get some comments from health or somebody and then you sent out a report?
Comments from health, uh, department on.
Hey, all right.
They took it out.
Um, okay, let me, uh, sort of this, I'm looking at the entirely long agenda packet then?
Well, it's a right agenda packet, but it's a supplement to it.
So I, yes, it was the email I sent out, I think it was. One day or two soon. It was a.
Well, there was only thousands of pages, so.
I tried that one.
I saw that it, um, in the supplemental that got sent out, it mentioned what. Things had gotten changed, or maybe I scrolled through it and saw it, but I didn't know there was. Other changes. Unless this was one of them from the health.
It must have been.
Well, they fixed that, they read.
Okay, well, then. So.
Yeah, then that's, that's great, that was my.
It's covered.
I just, I'd just like to throw that out there if P U D would like to explain why they put it in there. I'm, I'm willing to listen. I would, I would love to hear more discussion about.
But, is somebody P U D available?
I think it's the tricky. Star Trek.
Really just like thought nobody would see it, like, let's check that in there.
Yeah, maybe they met fission.
See if they catch it.
Even fission is still like.
Yeah, not easy.
Right.
Probably doable. Technology.
I don't know what I'm gonna do it right now, it's still some of the, the testing, like, you know.
Yeah, use Navy aircraft carrier or something, Doc, it does.
Um, I don't have anyone from P U D on, uh. That was a, uh, change that they requested in an email on, uh, nine nineteen twenty-five.
Any chance you could, you could read it to us, because I'm so curious.
It is, uh. Uh, it's merely, it's that one single change is just to add. And fusion to geothermal.
Who, who, who wrote that email?
Uh, that is from, uh, Chris, Chris Hemgartner, the general manager of Walkham P U D.
There you go.
Okay, um, I see Eddie has a, has a hand, a handwriting. Eddie, you wanna give us a little, sorry, tell us, okay, if Eddie gives a little background on some?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead. Eddie, Yuri, go ahead.
Sorry, I have to give him permission.
Oh, they're boring too.
Eddie Yuri?
Okay, um, I see Eddie has a, has a hand, a handwriting. Eddie, you wanna give us a little, sorry, tell us, okay, if Eddie gives a little background on some?
Yeah, good, uh, good evening. This is Eddie Yuri. I was, uh, I was listening in through. Yeah, sorry, can? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
He's in one of those areas.
Okay, I'm coming, I'm coming through now. Cool, uh.
Eddie Yuri?
Okay, um, I see Eddie has a, has a hand, a handwriting. Eddie, you wanna give us a little, sorry.
Yeah, good, uh, good evening, this is. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I realized what happened.
Oh.
Am I coming through now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, my bad. So I had the YouTube live stream running and then tried to dial into the Zoom because I heard this discussion and then it was backfeeding and that's what the, I was confused. I apologize for that, um. I was, uh, yeah, I was just gonna listen in tonight and not comment, but yeah, since you came up, uh. I do serve as a public utility district commissioner and, uh, yeah.
I do serve as a public utility district commissioner and uh, yeah, regarding, you know, the the request from our general manager. I recommend that you keep this policy in there. Uh, and you know, I was also, I've also been surprised to learn in the last couple of years. Uh. Things are so much further along infusion energy technology than most people realize, and you're right to be skeptical of it. Uh, and as far as, you know, in what timeframe such a project might become viable. Uh, in the timeframe of the comp plan that in the horizon we're looking. Highly likely. There is currently billions of dollars being invested in Washington State. Several of the world's most cutting-edge fusion companies are located here. Um, there is currently a active active permitting happening for a fifty megawatt fusion energy power plant. Uh, that is going through permitting right now to be built in Shalane County. Uh, it's experimental. It's from a company called Helion. I had the privilege of touring their uh. Research facility in Everett uh that employs hundreds of people. Um, has had, you know, some really cutting-edge breakthroughs and experiments, and in a few months might be announcing. Um, them, you know, uh, you know, will be announcing a demonstration of their technology to for an energy positive fusion reaction. Um, a lot of like the technological barriers that have been in place um to make fusion energy actually work. Um, you know, they're getting solved and there's a lot of competition. Well, there's a lot of competition between a lot of startups around the world on this, but it happened that a lot, but. Washington happens to be a hub for this. And so even if it say were, um, the thing is for like an experimental facility that. You know, wouldn't perhaps be um. You know, it's something like in order to demonstrate the efficacy of the technology, in order to generate the amount of. Electricity needed to do that, you have to be wired to a grid, or else you're just gonna, you know. Like, the energy has to go somewhere. So hence, you know, the fifty megawatt plant that um could be built if all goes well, you know, it's uh, but that's, you know, that's. You know, that's venture capital. It's, you know, these private companies, the the money is there. Um, and so if they wanted to come. And build a plant, experimental or not, or a real viable commercial power plant uh. In Wacom County in our industrial zone. Well, currently, are we are we zoned for that? Are we permitted or to allow that? Um, you know, there's all these things that we have to go through in doing that. So having in our comprehensive plan would be a good idea. Um, I'm not saying we should bank on it, but um. Yeah, the uh, the it's it's actually, I'd encourage you to do some more research into this. There was a. Event just a couple of weeks ago in Seattle Fusion Week featuring, you know, lots of, you know, these companies and various policymakers. I wasn't able to attend. Uh, there's a lot going on here, and yes, there is interest to come and locate a project in Wacom County.
Thank you, Eddie.
Alex or Lucas, why did it get? Pulled from the draft that was originally set out to the second one? Was that from the health department or was that some kind of editing thing that happened?
No, that was a uh inadvertent error. I apologize.
To the point, can we just make sure we're. Can we just make sure that we're. Confirming that there aren't other things that got dropped between V one and V two. Identified one accidentally. It would not surprise me if there were others. Yeah, I guess um uh Eddie, thanks for that that update. Um, that's that's great to hear. It's moving along. Uh, I'll I'll take back some of my sarcasm then from from earlier. Um, but I think uh. Yeah, I guess I think what I I I want things in the plan to be what's realistic and your other item there geothermal. Uh, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, we, somebody tried, we had a potential pilot geothermal program. Uh, the foothills and that one didn't go through due to concerns about our variety of things. Uh, do we know what happened with that geothermal pilot program?
Well, the Wacom P U D is still actively uh. Pursuing uh development of a geothermal power plant. You know, this is also, you know, this is cutting-edge emerging technology for enhanced geothermal. Uh, to be able to, you know, drill down miles into the stratosphere. Uh, and you know, create fractures to access that volcanic energy uh approximate to Mount Baker. So where we're currently at is uh we're long awaiting with, you know, even. Now, you know, for various reasons, further delays in awaiting um a a land lease auction from the Federal Bureau of Land Management. Uh, and so, you know, when they get around to opening that up uh for, you know, lease that there's leases that were already. Uh, you know, federally uh reviewed and permitted for the purpose of, you know, geothermal energy twenty years ago. Uh, we, you know, we could acquire one of those. There's some others potentially. Uh, so once, you know, we're able that that comes up, you know, I think the P U D and potentially some other parties are interested in that. So, you know, overall ownership of what a power plant, you know, the power plant and what it would look like. TBD, but we do have a pre-feasibility study that's nearing completion that seems promising. So the next step would be to go do the exploratory. Uh, the exploratory drilling, uh, which will have have to have a robust environmental review and permitting process. And of course, we want to make sure that. You know, do even just taking those steps can be done safely and responsible. Um, and of course, uh. The the Nooksec tribe uh is uh really taking a leading role in um in going through that process and being a being a partner in that as well. So. Uh, you know, more to come. But yeah, it's that's the real thing. We're, we want to build a power plant. We will have to update code. There is also, you know, the, you know, built. Wiring the transition to connect to the grid. All of, you know, everything we have to go through there, I think there will need to be um. Yeah, I mean, there it's been on your docket actually to come and do an ordinance update for for geothermal, and that's something we look forward to going through.
Thank you, Eddie.
Are we ready to move this on?
Over three more.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just working on it. I'm just. Trying to make this easy by actually writing them out, so I can. Elaine, if I send it to you, can you form up? Is that the easiest file?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Pusher. Bring this out. Uh, I saw it. Lauren. And her hand raised. She want.
Lauren, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to address um maybe a general. Comment about this section and the distinction between the section, the utilities chapter and some policies that you might have seen in the. Um, climate element. I think it relates to Commissioner Dunn's comment about small-scale geothermal. These policies that were added in this section relate specifically to. Renewable energy that's at a larger utility scale. So um Eddie was speaking to the P U D and geothermal. The intention around this group of policies is that. It's a larger capacity for all those renewable energy projects than what you were looking at. Um, in the buildings and energy section of the climate element. So if that helps. Maybe clarify the distinction of why there's both a renewable energy section. In this chapter, and then you saw some policies in the other chapter as well.
Thank you. I like that just a mail. I think it was five S. Is it the end of egg?
Want me to share it?
Yeah. So we'll see, we'll see if Henry likes me up first. No, no, Eddie, I've had conversations. All right, so I propose this is items five S five. Five S six and five S seven. Do you want me to read them into the record?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can, all right. Five S five, establish economic, physical and legal feasibility. Of redirecting surplus fresh water from the mouth of the Nooksec. The ag operations in the urban growth areas that like adequate legal order. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
You know, just to add that this is a, this is a topic that's been on discussion for probably over a decade. Even at the congressional level. So. But no one's ever actually worked out whether we can like this work. There's actually been a study doing that. About fifteen years ago. There's a, I'm never actually seeing this study. I find sources and all that. I wasn't saying funded, I was just saying let's let's establish what it's what it is, because the funding comes on the third one. But. And then. There are two other motions related to that. Do you want me to speak in those in the same time? Yeah, go ahead. So five S six would be identify potential. Utility corridors to install pipelines to transport surplus freshwater. From the mouth of the Nooksec. And it should say to ensure. Oh, sorry, and ensure. Future development does not prohibit utilizing this corridor. In other words. If we are ever going to be able to put the pipes in, let's work out where they should go and make sure we don't. Build stuff right on the top of that and block ourselves from uploading out of using. And then. Seven would be. Identify and advocate for funding to redirect surplus water from the mouth of the Nooksec. For ag and other uses. So I'll put those forward as the first three things as one motion. Anyhow, motion, do we have a second? Yeah, second.
Yeah, I said the, where's the first one? I'll I'll go and second the the packet for it.
Commissioner Hudson, second? No, I didn't say.
Like, that's a great idea.
I just turned it to second and, oh, no, my bad. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, so I I seconded it.
Commissioner, sir.
Uh, yeah, I don't know much about this um. With uh, other than economic. Obviously, challenges, has there been, when these things have been brought up? What kind of? Challenges people brought up or, you know, arguments against?
The number one was cost, but Eric Henry might be.
So I was gonna say, let's ask him.
But no, this was P U D one, that's about what the title is on.
Yeah.
All the way up along the river up to Linda cover and then shooting up north. You know, to several bank areas.
But but the main objection was just the cost.
But nobody had any other objection.
No, it's with resource. Oh, we won't let. And no, I don't think there were any other financial policy of objection. But it didn't go any farther than.
Just never got past the study of it's gonna be a ton of money.
Other Southampton. If um if Kaya Hayes is ready to comment, I would ask you to recognize her. Go ahead, Kaya.
Thanks, um, I guess. I would just.
All right, I'll interrupt for just a second. Would you uh identify um your position, please?
Yes, yeah, my name is Kaya Hayes. Um, I'm here tonight. Uh, to answer questions about uh any of the proposed additions that are related to the uh Y R O one planning unit. Uh, recommendations. Um, I'm also separately uh serve as the land and water policy lead. Uh, for resources, a local environmental nonprofit based out of Billingham. Uh, working in Wacom County. Um, we've been engaging on the comp plan. Um, since the start of the process. Uh, my my question, I guess, is is more of a request for clarification. In terms of like, what surplus are you referring to with with these policies, Commissioner?
So when the, so the the freshwater in the Nooksec. Ultimately mixes with saltwater. At which point, point it just becomes part of the seawater. So the the freshwater. Just before it does that, is surplus. To a degree, I mean, it's there's obviously it's not a hundred percent surplus. But there's a percentage of that, because that's where the greatest amount of freshwater is, just so that can just before that conversions into seawater.
So I I is this, I do these policies. Establish additional capacity or rather to divert water? That is already currently diverted to users, but just moving the point of diversion down river to maintain flow in stream. For more of the main stem.
Well, it's it's the type water that's going down the Nooksec. It's just about to mix with seawater and diverting it. As freshwater. Back to agricultural uses to reduce the demand on groundwater. Or from pulling water out of the Nooksec, say to Everson or or Nooksec.
Yeah, so I guess I'm asking maybe in context, you know, of adjudication with the likely outcome that. There probably isn't a whole lot of surplus to be working with. And and I guess my question is, are we talking about like winter flow surplus and, you know, associated storage in order to make use of that? For ag irrigation needs and other uses or. It it are you sort of framing this around? A proposed condition where. There is surplus surface water to be diverted and allocated to meet. Newer or more junior uses.
But I I'm just a bit confused while we're having this conversation.
Go ahead. I think what uh Kaya is referring to is. Uh, the in-stream flow. Uh, rule for the Nooksec River. Right, so there is a reserved amount of water uh that the Department Ecology has determined is necessary for fish wildlife in that river. And therefore, and that at certainly at certain periods of the of time. Uh, there is no, that in-stream flow isn't met. Right, so there isn't any. Surplus in terms of. She, when she talks about surplus, she's talking about surplus of water above the minimum in-stream flow. And if you're not meeting the in-stream flow, you're below that, there's no such thing as surplus.
Right, but the in-stream flow, the in-stream flow is based on where you are in the river.
Correct, yeah.
Right, and the further down you go down the river, there's unless the in-stream flow is in a deficit.
But it may still be in a deficit. During during low flow period.
I and and I'm not, I, it may still be in a deficit. But that's the right, why I'm saying, let's work out what what it is. To see if it's if it's, you know, because it was economically, physically and legally feasible, legally would address the D O E question. As to whether it makes the in-stream flow.
So maybe. If you would maybe amending the language to specify surplus. Above minimum in-stream flows.
So.
Something like that, that would, I think, get to the point, but. What do we mean by surplus? It has a legal meaning. You know, in winter, it may be times when it is above the extreme flow. Well, but that's your point, right?
There's plenty of that.
The idea is pump it up and then have some natural storage and or aquifer recharge. But and let it settle back and recharge the stream. Later, months later. It's called managed aquifer recharge.
Yeah, the the technique. But I I understand the question. My challenge is. All the evidence I've seen is that the aquifers are actually recharged every winter anyway. That's not the problem. The idea of doing. Storage is the problem, because we don't have anywhere to store it.
Yeah, so the. City London's got some money, can grant money from ecology to do what's called a managed aquifer recharge project, and they're looking at a couple of different sites. The one on the South Fork, I think one of them. And the idea is, yeah, you take that water off in the winter or late winter. Spring, when you're above in-stream flow and then. Pump it to a little reservoir and let it infiltrate. And it can do, it can take months, right? And so the idea is for that water to get back to the stream. In summer. Yeah.
Yeah, and and I don't disagree with you on the concept. It just that all the discussions, well, if I was ever involved in this, no one could actually identify a place. Where we could do the in-stream, do the storage. Because all the ground is flat, and that means you've got to build up a reservoir that governs all the way around like a swimming pool.
Yeah.
And it's just too prohibitive in terms of the amount of water you can store. But, um, yeah, I mean, if. To to accept as an uh suggestion. You know, legal feasibility of redirecting surplus freshwater above minimum in frame in-stream flows. Above the requirements. Above the requirements of minimum in-stream flows, is that addressed with you? Talking about.
Yeah. Ask Kaya, maybe with that. Addresses your concerns to.
I I think that's definitely helpful in clarifying or further quantifying what surplus is referring to. Thank you.
Commissioner Hampton. It's my understanding that there are various processes right now. Co- trying to cope with this issue and provide solutions. And I don't think that we should put a clause in to prejudice. The process towards any one solution. This might be. A good one. But I don't think we should say this is the way we want to go. I think we should let it leave it up to people doing the studies and the. And the reviews come up with the way to go rather than saying, oh, let's go fusion, but you know, I think. So I I would. Oppose this, so I'm glad that you're interested in finding creative ways to solve it, but I don't think we should just point towards this way as the way. Go ahead.
I mean, I wasn't, I was actively involved in this issue for over a decade. And in the end of the day, the thing that was I found most frustrating about the water issues. Everybody says, well, it's, you know, water writes this, water writes that, and at the end of the day. That's not the right place you start. You start with where's the physical water? And if you don't, and you've got to find, you need more water, you've got to find more physical water, not more paper water. And this is the only place that anybody's. Really identified as another source of physical water. The other exceptions I will note. Is taking it out of much deeper aquifers. And that's what City of Blaine, I think, hit an aquifer at seven hundred fifty feet or something, and they actually think it comes out of the Fraser River. Right? But the water, if I remember correctly, is about ten thousand years old, so it's, I don't know what the migration life of it is, right? So so the point is, in terms of things that we can control and predict. This was the only source of of water, because storage is not viable unless you've really got a river valley to do it in. Because of the construction of a dam, so that's why I was. I was pushing for this, because at the end of ten years, this is the only thing that came up that seemed to have addressed the physical water issue. So.
Mr. Gray. May not be necessary, but we're gonna move to close debate. They moved to that. Call questions? Yeah, call a question, thank you. I have no objection. So. Motion, who made the second on it?
Done. Commission done did.
Okay, there's no objections. I need what you call a role play.
Yes. Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Mosari?
No.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
No.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes.
Just clarify that that additional in-stream language will get added by somebody. We probably added in.
Yeah, let's. Yeah, so I think if you go to F S seven.
It applies to all three.
Five S seven, Lucas?
Yeah, of. Right here, surplus in the stream.
Yeah. Well, it's probably after freshwater, right, above, I think we said above the minimum in-screen flow.
Yes, right there, above the minimum in-screen flow.
And then. That should apply to all three.
Right. Actually, Lucas, it should say required minimum in-stream flow. What was it, five, five? Four to three, five to four?
Five to three.
But just for clarification, my main reason for putting this in is that we need to answer this question. Because it's been an idea for, it says, over fifteen years, but no one's ever nailed it down.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Um, I'm just now looking at the the newer one, the word the road net, which I was, I missed, so I'll talk about that, but. Could we look at page five eight? Goal. Five H two. And compare that to goal five H eight. On the next page. And I believe they're saying basically the same thing. And so maybe we just combine those those goals. So five H two is encourage support renewable energy projects. Such as interoxygenated solar battery window applicable, and then five H eight is support regional statewide efforts. Build the utility scale real projects, increase production energy from renewable sources, there, like, I feel like you could probably. I guess one utility scale and one is does not use the word chili scale.
Lens project specific of H two and then. Eventually is more kind of. The regional and statewide effort, so it's out sort of outside the county and more of a political. For Bobby.
Right, regional and statewide efforts, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Cool.
So go ahead, Bishop.
What? I said, someone move to ship it. Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, if there's no other thing, I'd make a motion to. Pass on the council.
We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and second. To. Over this on the council. Any more discussion? Yeah, I wonder if I can add, uh, call upon Mike Kaufman to make a comment. Yeah.
Great, thank you for the opportunity. One of the last comments I wanted to make was. Out of all of this discussion on the utility chapter of water and utilities, the P U D with three elected commissioners. It's a ball, this is their bailiwick. And under this whole utility chapter, I believe a statement should be added. Connecting the comprehensive plan utility chapter to the Wacom P U D. And the language might be stated as such, the P U D shall work in good faith with Wacom County. To implement the goals and policies contained in the utility chapter five of the comprehensive plan. Because unless you have an agency that can look after this, that you can go talk to. Nobody's gonna look at your commissioner's idea about more cell towers. Or more water, or more implementing these things, there's nobody there that looks at it. And this is under the bailiwick, so then if that statement is made, I can go into the Wacom County. P U D. And talk about these things and ask them to do that, and it starts there with three elected commissioners. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, can. I guess I would like to move. The motion suggested by Citizen Kaufman. Which, if he would repeat it, if there's a second. Hold just a moment, go ahead, I think.
There's a current motion on.
Oh, that's sorry, my bad. So we have that. My bad. Oh, I see. So we have a motion on the floor to. Move it on, right, yeah.
You can make an amendment though.
Make an amendment.
Well, I could vote no, and then we continue discussing it, right? Well, that depends on what everyone else does, but. Sir, you can make an amendment to the current motion.
There's a current motion until we've had chips.
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, okay, I'll move that we table the current motion in favor of listening to one additional amendment. As expressed by Citizen Kaufman. Second. Got a motion seconded table, is everybody okay? Okay, so could I have you repeat that so they could hear that and transcribe it?
Yes. The B U D shall work in good faith. With Wacom County. To implement the goals and policies contained in the utility chapter five of the comprehensive plan.
So I'm making that motion. Right, seconded.
Second. Or is he? Seconded. No, but. Stop, stop.
I can second it.
No, that's fine. No, I I was gonna make a point. And the amendment, you you can't, we cannot, the county cannot direct P U D to work in good faith. Comprehensive plan can direct the county to work in good faith with the P U D, yes. That's a good point.
Um.
Go ahead.
I just got call on Eddie. Eddie, you still out there?
And then I would talk, what do you think?
You able to give us your your perspective there?
Sure, well, I very much appreciate the spirit of the motion, and it's perfectly in line with the intentions of. All of us at Wacom P U D and and is reflected in our draft strategic plan that we're planning to adopt by the end of the year. However, I was gonna make exactly the point that Commissioner Brown made, which is just in the syntax of it. Yeah, appropriately, the comp plan would be directing the county to work with us, not us to work with them. I mean, you couldn't. As a shall, you know, it wouldn't be quite proper that way, I think, in the form, but. But yeah, and the idea, you know, if you guys tweak the wording a little bit, I think the idea sounds great if you're willing to put that in there.
Perhaps encourage. Yeah, could, did we have a transcription of that? Format it that way, we take a look at it? Lucas, can you bring that up on the screen and we'll take a look at it, see how it comes out?
Yes, I can.
Where does that go?
That's the question. That was the motion as read, I believe.
Can you get rid of it? There it is.
Or would it be like Wacom County shall work with the P D in good faith? Maybe?
Welcome to you. Just the off the front here. Should or shall? Hey, shell is more.
Well, or encourage. Curved and new.
We always work in good faith.
What was that?
We always work in good faith.
Everything's.
Doesn't mean we necessarily agree.
We work in good faith.
Having you back, it's a good thing.
This is meant very well.
Uh, and then it's just a matter of where it goes.
Right under the title.
Uh, I think five A. The very first goal is five A. Thanks, good health. Talking about vocational criteria for citing needed, future needed. Utility facilities.
Would you like to add a new policy or a new goal?
Oh, I think we got enough goals. Is there a collaboration goal anywhere?
I'm pretty sure of.
Did we make the motion that staff?
Figure it out.
Find some time to find a place, so it's not rushed.
I like that idea.
Yes, please.
There, you just got it. Okay, the council can always change this, if you want to put somewhere else.
So we're ready to vote on that?
Okay with you?
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? I think when you call the role, please.
Yes. Hanson?
Yes.
Mosari?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg? Eisenberg? Gray?
Yes.
Barton?
Yeah.
Passes.
No.
Our backs to the main motion.
We untable the main motion.
There we go.
Okay. All right, any discussion? I think when you're ready, we call the role, please.
Yes. Mosari?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
I don't see Eisenberg. Greif?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes.
Move German?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm seeing. Now, we untabled it.
What? No, I got, I got one thing.
Did we untabled it and took the boat? Oh, we didn't pass the. Now we got a pallet promotion.
Maybe did.
I thought we did.
That's what that.
Is that okay?
Okay.
As long as that's what you meant, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So anybody listen to the tapes, I'm not gonna know what to say.
So that's, so we're all good on the utility chapter, moving that on to County Council, is that right?
Correct.
We're all, okay, it's good. Sounds good. So I have an item under, call it new business or something. This is out in Kendall, there's a landowner who'd like to rezone some properties, it's called the Truck Properties Parcels. He'd like to zone his eighty acres to U R M six. I was in that Paradise Valley area. It's sort of the last affordable housing that's out there. So, oh, it makes sense to me, there's, there's some zoning there. It's already a fairly dense area, there's no wetlands. And so I would go ahead and make a motion that we support that that zoning change.
Point order. Aren't we coming back to all these U G A's again? Mark just told us in the beginning of the meeting. Seems like we should discuss it when we're discussing the U G A's again.
What are we gonna come back to?
We're coming back on. But you still can get it out there.
Well, one thing we would have to do is, first is revise or update the my capacity analysis. If based on the proposal. Right, because it's only.
For a reason, we can't do that.
Staff needs to do some work to get some information before you come back and.
That's right.
Are you to be considered that?
Okay.
So if that if that's okay with their, if that's the motion, would be a better motion right now, we just ask staff to evaluate that proposal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense, okay. Uh, I don't even know if I made a motion, definitely get seconded, so I will make a new motion. The staff evaluate the, do you want to call the truck properties? Or what would, what would you call this proposal?
Which you, whatever you call it.
Sure, we'll go with the truck properties proposal.
Right. Make a friendly.
Yeah.
Evaluate the distribution of density on east and west of the highway of the road.
Yeah, as per.
What he said.
We tentatively have that scheduled for October, your October thirtieth. That'll give us a couple weeks. Our costumes required. Nope, I said our costumes required.
Oh, costumes. Was it thirty? Yeah, just, just.
Day before.
Thirty first. Okay, thirty first Halloween, right?
Yeah.
On Halloween, I can't believe it.
So we do, Mark, could you add that to? Maybe a check.
I think I think I need a second, I believe.
Is that, is that Halloween?
No.
Three four, I'm just being silly. I haven't said, I've only just along. Scott's got a second? Yep. Wet wetlands, presumably.
No, no, no.
So we were adding it to the agenda, correct?
Uh, yes, sad is to ask staff to.
Evaluate.
Evaluate.
The truck property proposal.
Yep.
And then what Brown said.
And then, and what Brown said, yeah. And Scott seconded it.
Okay, I think when you call the role, please.
Do you have any discussion? No, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, just one, just note that in the trip. Proposal is, it's asking that some area that was going to be rezoned. The U R six will not be, no longer be rezoned, so that will impact other landowners, and I don't have a dog in this breed, but I just want to point that out.
Yeah.
And I think it's up to him, so I think, I think our, our question. And, and I think it's up to him to, I think, I think our, our question is which of those two landowners is more likely to develop housing more sooner, sooner than the other one? Um, because there's no point in allocating density to some guy, says, uh, yeah, maybe my grandchildren will do it. But I don't have any immediate plans versus a guy says, you know, I'm, I'm ready, I've got a shovel standing here, ready to dig a hole.
Shovel ready?
Shovel.
All right, Eileen, would you call the role, please?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Clarification, what we're about to do.
Asking them to look into it, to look into it.
Van Daleen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Eisenberg left, Gray?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes?
Should I count for five?
No, whack. Whack table.
Ready, you all have anything? Meaning it's turned.
Thirty-nine, Eileen, thirty-nine. Twenty minutes earlier than we thought.
It's great here.